October eighth zoning board hearing. We've just got a couple of housekeeping items to handle before we get started. And with that, members have had an opportunity to review the minutes of the last meeting. If all are okay, I will need to get a motion for approval. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mary, have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. John Hancock. Since we are a judicial type of board, the first application is going to be on at 7:05. Is that applicant here?
Yeah.
Is he here?
I think so.
Ricardo Olivera here. All right, while I'm addressing the audience, why don't you come up and sit in the front seat there so the microphone's close by? If you've got something that you want, the copies of any of the board members, why don't you pass those out? And then if you have something to put on the board, on the board over there for the audience to see, please do so. We've got some tax up there for you. And while you're getting prepared, I've got a couple of minutes, and this is specifically for the audience. During the hearing, once we, the applicant, has addressed what he'd like to do, the questions will come from the board first. Board members will have an opportunity to ask their questions of the applicant and have that type of discussion. A lot of times, the public's questions are answered through this board based on, you know, the experience that this board has in addressing these situations. If any member of the audience would like to speak, feel free to do so. Raise your hand, stand up, we'll get you a microphone. We ask that you identify, you know, your address, who you are. All questions have to come through the chair, and we'll address those questions to the applicant through the chair. That way there, it keeps things a little bit clearer. So with that, I will read the announcement of the hearing for the first hearing, which is on at 7:05, on the continued application of Ricardo de Olivera. Thirty-eight Reservoir Road, Milford, for a special permit relief pursuant to the appropriate provisions of the Milford zoning bylaw in relation to a 50,009, 26 square foot parcel of land, more or less, located and known as Thirty-eight Reservoir Road. The release is sought to permit the peninsula to have chickens as residential animals within the meaning of the Milford zoning bylaw on Thirty-eight Reservoir Road. The board members that's going to be hearing this will be the board members from the last meeting that was, this was continued from. And those board members are Mary Carlson, myself, David Pine is not here, Joe Evans, John Dagnes. I'm allowed to add another one, and I am going to put Brian on that, okay? I'll check with Jerry on that, Brian. So, this is a continuation of a hearing. The applicant did not have any information in the application whatsoever.
This is a different application from his first one, it's been changed. Did he refile? This is dated September 10th, this is July 7th. It's the same, except he's added more information.
The first one was filled incorrectly, so the second one is pretty much a repeat of the first one.
And who did you file this with?
My apologies, I didn't get that.
The second.
The second one?
Yes, the second.
The bottom?
Okay, all right, that's okay, go ahead, all right.
All right, let me kind of, let me kind of update the board members, since this is a continuance. And I'll direct it back to some of the comments that were made from the other board. The planning board did review this on August 11th and recommended unfavorable recommendation. The applicant, the application was incomplete, semitic septic system plan may create a nuisance, was the comment. And again, this came from the chairman of the planning board, the applicant was requesting a special permit for such residential animal uses by a special permit. The applicant, the application, of course, was incomplete. The plan submitted with the application is a septic system as-built plan, the proposed location of the chicken coop is not indicated on the plan, and that's one of the reasons that the planning board did deny that. So, with that, how am I pronouncing your name? I don't want to pronounce it incorrectly.
Ricardo.
Got it, okay. With that, I see that you've, you've brought in some plans. Do I have an updated plan here, or any plan?
I, no, this is, this is just there. He gave, that's the same one he gave.
Okay, so, again, tell us what you're going to do, where you propose to put this chicken coop, and how many? You can take the microphone off as you want.
Yep, you mind if I, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
This is the property, right over here, Reservoir, actually, Reservoir Street. Planning to, well, chicken coop. We have some distance from the next house, the next neighbor, to the right, which is number thirty.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four is about 444 feet. The next one, which is thirty-six, is about 332 feet.
On the white plan, can you show me where the coop is going?
Yes. It's right over here. Right over here by the driveway.
In the front?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, anything else? What'd you say, nineteen chickens?
Yes.
All right, with that, why don't you have a seat? You all set?
So, what's that, can you explain this for me, please?
I'm just going to read these later.
Yeah, can you speak into the microphone for me?
Absolutely. I, Ricardo Olivera, residing at Thirty-eight Reservoir Road, Milford, Mass. Want to share my plans with you to maintain the chickens that will be housed on my property. My plan is to maintain the chickens, my plan to maintain the chickens are, the chicken coop will be cleaned at least twice a week, more if necessary. The manure, which I will keep in a separate barrel, will either be brought to the transfer station on Satter Street, or be used for fertilizer, because I also have a vegetable garden.
Okay, great, thank you. With that, Charlie, I'll start on your end.
So you're going to have nineteen?
And there was also, are you going to have any roosters there with them?
Yeah, I have one rooster, maybe, with authorization, I continue, maybe no, only for the chickens.
And you got it away from the septic tank now, right?
Yes.
All right. All right, Brian?
This will be the septic system up here.
Behind, yes. Behind the house.
And the chicken coop is here.
Quick question, you want a well up here? Well water, or town water?
Town water.
Which, I'm just trying to clarify, which house is yours?
Yeah, my house is here. This is my house.
No, but can you show us on the, on the map?
Because I don't know if that's, I don't know, I don't know if this is different than what you've got up there.
That should be the same that you have, right?
Oh, yeah, I have one more here.
Are there, are there two, are there two houses with driveways right next to each other, and yours is one, and the others is your neighbor's, is that?
Yeah, I have, yeah, I have one neighbor's here, the right.
Okay, so you have, your driveways are right, parallel?
Yes, they have two driveways, a little bit separate, yeah.
Okay. And the, and the chicken coop is going to be right up towards the front of the property, visible from the road, and right next to your neighbor's driveway? About how big is the chicken coop going to be?
It's going to be about, the yard's going to be about ten by twenty, but the chicken coop is going to be about five by eight.
Five by eight?
Yeah.
And how is it designed, how is it built?
Yeah, huh?
It's going to be pretty much like a shed.
Yeah, the same, the shed, small shed, yeah.
Nothing further right now, Mr. Chairman.
Joe?
I'll check out which house is, no.
Can you come up and point to him what, I'll read your houses, please?
This is my house.
That's your house, all right. So one of those is a neighbor, or is it?
Yes, it's not a neighbor, yeah. This here, over here, one hundred feet.
So what is it?
About a hundred feet.
Yeah, the, for the house, yes, yes. These are number forty, the reservoir number forty.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
Um, I don't have any more questions at this time.
I, I, I see where the location is, and I really don't think that this is a good spot for, for that type of use. Go ahead, Mary.
No, I kind of have to agree with you, and you've marked off where it is, but it's not to scale. And you just drew something in here. So this is really, you're, you're, you're drawing in there, this is not drawn to scale.
No.
Okay. And it perhaps, then it's, so it basically almost sits on the road?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, I don't think that's, I'm not leaning towards that's a good place for it either. That's all right now.
Okay.
This is based for my ID. I don't construct nothing, because I need authorization. After, maybe I have authorization, decide the company go for the, what is best good, it comes such a small house, everything nice. Maybe a little bit more for the app.
You can change the locations if necessary, further down to the yard.
John?
What is the reason for having these chickens?
Qu'as en?
Does he know where, which house is?
My daughter, my daughter have one bed, and my, my son is like the beds, don't have beds. I like it because he's going for, for look for the chicken, go in the morning, sometimes like the, the eggs.
Kids like nineteen?
Only for the pets.
Just for pets?
Yeah, just for pets.
You need nineteen of them, just for pets?
Yeah, maybe ten, fifteen, because I pick up nineteen first, I pick up the babies. Just put the name, look the color, this, this, what name, the chicken, do I do? So the chicken?
He likes to do for the kids, that's all.
Why, he's speaking? I continue here, no more for me, because he's like, sometimes talk for the kids, the chicken out, describe, his my son and my daughter.
Five by eight coop? Five foot by eight foot coop?
Five by eight, yeah.
How much of a roaming area outside the coop?
Ten by twelve.
Ten by twelve.
Offense, then?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, if the transfer station takes manure. So it would have to be recycled on your own property. I really don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure they don't, but I'm pretty sure they do not take manure. That's all I have, all right.
All right, thank you. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to be heard? Do me a favor, would you pass him, just take it out?
Yes.
Should be on.
My name is Sean Hanley, I live at seventy Camp Street, and I'm directly behind on Camp Street. And I think the question's been answered, but I, if I, if I might take too much just to kind of put this in perspective about the application, the applicant isn't here because they built the chicken coop and decided to look at the zoning code and realized they needed to come for permission. They actually built the chicken coop, brought the chickens, annoyed the neighbors, a complaint was called in, and the chickens, somebody in town hall acted that chickens were gone. So, there's one instance where there was proof that it happened that it annoyed the neighbors. Historically, the residents who lived in that exact same house, probably three years ago, did the exact same thing. Brought a chicken coop in, put the chickens in, annoyed the neighbors, a call went in the town hall, action was taken, and the chickens were gone. So under the residential animal clause, I think it's pretty clear, we have two historical facts, where we've proven that it does in fact annoy the neighbors if not become a nuisance. So, I see it as that, you know, it meet, that meets the criteria for denial, forget all the other questions, but I hope that you agree the same with us, so.
Thank you. Anybody else care to be heard?
My name's Mike.
It's on.
Okay, sorry. Mike Catalano, I live at Thirty-six Reservoir Road, been there for fourteen years, just as Sean stated, the previous owners tried to build the chicken coop also, were the ones who called. Not only is the fact which Sean mentioned are true, there is conservation land behind the house, and also in front, there's a stream that runs through from the rainwater that, you know, during the rainstorms. That's only located about maybe a hundred feet away from where the coop is situated now. And where the coop is situated now also is about probably ten feet away from my property line. The surveyors did the stakes when they moved in, and I had gone out to measure it. And the last fact I'd like to mention is, it's, it's visible from our bedroom, it's not something I really wish to see every morning waking up. And that's about it. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Catalano, and I live at Thirty-six Reservoir Road. And I want to reiterate the fact that we know that it's a nuisance, because we have experienced it twice before. I'm hearing that manure is going to be spread. That smell is atrocious. And if there are going to be roosters, they have woken me up more times than I care to count. And I really do not want these chickens anywhere near my house.
Thank you.
One more. Jennifer Angleton at Thirty-four Reservoir Road. And I do think it would be a nuisance and annoying, and I think that's a big reason that we're showing up again to just make the point of that, that we'd rather not see the chickens there.
Thank you. Anybody else want to be heard? I'm going to make a brief comment, and then I'll turn it over to my, my colleagues before we close the hearing and take this under advisement. Back about two or three years ago, we had a similar request up off of, I believe it was Conifav. And that particular party had a good-sized backyard and had some privacy. They wanted a couple of chickens. What we did is, at that point in time, not hearing any opposition from the neighbors at all, matter of fact, we had support from the neighbors. We, we, and it was a first experience for this particular person, we granted them a one-year permit that would need to have to be, come back, come back to be renewed every year. That particular person or family decided very quickly that the noise of the chickens bothered them so much that they decided to get rid of them. So they never came back. You're in a neighborhood here where you really don't have a good-sized backyard with some privacy and some buffer. And whether it's nineteen chickens or five chickens at the front of a street, when someone has to look out the front door and see a chicken coop in a ten-by-twenty pen, becomes an eyesore for that neighbor. And with that fact, I want to make that comment, because I think it's important, when I see this aerial photo of where this is going, I can see it to be very problematic for, for the abutters, definitely. So with that, I'm going to leave you with the last word before we close the hearing, and we can vote. So if you'd like to have anything else to say before we close the hearing, if board members have anything else to say, by the way?
I just had a question, is there any reason you can't put this in the back, behind your house?
That will be my next comment, if you allow me to. Everything he's saying is based on the chicken coop behind the house. That's why his plans to put it to the front of the house, because about 432 feet from the next neighbor. So with all the insulation, everything, I don't think noise is going to be a problem at all. He has a plan for the manure, he has a vegetable garden there, I mean, and he's doing something for the kids, make the kids happy. So, I understand all the questions, all the issues, I totally understand, but that was based behind the house. Now he has a plan to put it in the front of the house. That's all.
I just have a quick question. Did you have chickens here before, on this property?
No.
How long have you, how long have you lived here?
Maybe two months.
Who, who owns the house?
He owns the house, I'm just helping him out.
So, okay, he owns the house, but you're going to take care of the chickens there?
No.
Oh, okay. So you're going to take care of the chickens there, okay. And you're saying?
But did you have chickens before?
Yes.
When he first moved in, he brought in the chicken without knowing that needs a special permit for it.
And how many chickens did you bring in?
Nineteen.
Nineteen?
Yeah. I buy nineteen, used baby. I put first time in my basement, stay maybe twenty, twenty-five days in my basement, after put outside, because winters.
Apparently the neighbors were bothered by the noise.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, good, yeah.
That's when it was behind the house.
Well, I don't think anywhere around the house is not going to be a bother to the neighbors. I mean, noise travels, and, and looking at this aerial view, this house over here, I don't know which, which?
No, he's not here.
He's not here, okay. Well, if the others are complaining, and they're that much further away, I can imagine what the noise is for him.
Okay, does anybody want to make another comment? You have, what'd you do with your microphone?
It's right over here, actually.
Maybe you should keep it.
It's my understanding, the pro, the way the houses were built were on an angle. And I know for a fact that the prop, the land behind my house is conservation land, I think it also a bunch Sean's property, too. And it would run right through their yard also, and that was the first problem we had with the first people that owned the house. They built it about ten feet away from the conservation land, which was on the side of our house. So I can't see how a pen could be successful there. And, you know, my other concern is also raccoons, it's, I've seen raccoons in the yard, and not because of the chickens, but before even chickens came, but there, we do have raccoons. And that's another issue that I have with the predators. Especially with the coyotes now, and Franklin and Millis, I mean, I just, you know, these are things that concern me as a parent.
Anything else? Okay, great. So with that, if you're all set, we'll close the hearing and take it under advisement. Thank you very much, you can take your paperwork. It's yours?
Yeah.
You guys want to wait till the end, or do you want to take a vote? It's the pleasure. Want to vote now?
Looking to vote now, yeah.
Okay. All right. So, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I'm...
Recommend unfavorable action.
Yeah, and I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion for unfavorable, all those in favor of?
I see there's any discussion.
Denying any, denying this application? Any discussion? Those in favor of denying the application signify by raising their hand. Okay, that's been denied. Thank you very much, everyone, we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we're on to the next hearing. There it is now, seven twenty-five, we're running a little bit behind, apologize, but do the best we can. Okay, this is on the continued application of David, incredible with names. How do you pronounce your last name, sir?
Lorero.
Lorero, okay. Three oh five Main Street, Milford, for variance relief from the provisions of section two four and two five. According to the zoning bylaw, those that relate to the parcel land located on the south Wetherly side of Thayer and Main Street in Milford, parcel is known and numbered as three oh five Main Street. The relief requested is sought in order to permit the construction of a proposed addition on the easterly side of the existing two-family structure on the property, notwithstanding the, the issues of the Milford zoning bylaw. On this panel tonight, we will have the four main members, and Charlie, I'll put you on this one tonight. Okay, so it's myself, Mary, Joe, John, and Charlie. So as I go through the application, it looks to me like you've got two variances, one for, it looks like the side lot. I'll read from the application first. Concerning the question that the applicant has been given, what circumstances exist relating to the soil condition, shape, and topography of the subject premises, which do not generally affect the land in the zoning district? The applicant states the right lot line is angled from the, from the street, which restricts any addition to the right side of the building. The existing building is non-conformant to the right lot line itself. Concerning the question, what hardship, what does the circumstances describe? He said the building is a pre-existing, non-conforming use. And then the last question is statewide, you felt the grant of variance will not cause substantial detriment to the public good. The applicant states variance will allow the owner to expand the existing entrance. The proposed expansion is toward the rear of the building, which is where the access is from Thayer Street. The applicant sent this over to the planning board, and the planning board reviewed the petition at their meeting on August seventeenth, and voted favorable recommendation. And of course, town planner Larry Duncan also indicated that the parcel is an irregular-shaped lot. The budding host of three oh two Main Street established the common side lot land to be configured parallel to Thayer Street. While the house on the subject property is orientated perpendicular to Main Street, he also recommended a favorable report be sent on to this board. So with that, Dave, welcome back, I'm glad you could show up. Apparently there was some confusion that you didn't, you didn't know you had to be here. So with that, why don't you give us an idea, I see it's, I see that you put the plan on the wall. John, are you going to go through this for us?
Yes, I am.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, John Anout with Gary and Howman, I'm here tonight representing David Lorero of three oh five Main Street. The current house and lot is located in the RA zone. The RA zone requires a ten-yard setback. We're here tonight asking for a variance to the side yard setback. In the handouts I gave you, you'll see the addition on the right, on the, basically the northeast corner of the house. Currently, there's an existing deck there, and associated stairway. We're asking for the variance to, and basically do the addition right where the deck is. So there will be no additional runoff from the proposed addition, because the deck is already impervious. As you can see on the way the lot's configured, the house is in one of the older lots on Main Street, it's pre-existing, non-conforming. The lot does conform for frontage in the area. This is, right next to the, the lot next door is used as a commercial use. That's Dennis DeJondo Corporation, maybe, if you know right where that is. So there is no parking from the Main Street to the house. The parking is, the entrance, entrance to the house is in the back, the two garages are in the back. This walk and the deck is used basically as the main entrance for the house. So they're asking to enclose that into a foyer area for the main entrance coming into the house. Once again, with the commercial use next door, Dennis doesn't have any problem with them enclosing that. They're currently using the walk, the walk's not going to change coming in through there. It's basically enclosing a deck that's already there, doing an addition to the deck is. I don't see any detriment to the zoning, as you can see right next door, the house next door is literally two feet off the lot line. Many of the old houses on Main Street don't meet the current setbacks, for the side yard especially, a lot, most of them don't meet for front or side. You know, I don't see any detriment to the neighborhood, I don't see, I, we do have, the shape of the lot is odd, and exactly as Larry said, this lot was set up off Thayer Street, this lot was basically set off Main, but the house was, was squared up with Main Street, because this is the front with the porch area. So, you know, it's, it's an irregular-shaped yard lot, you can see it right there, it's an L. So we meet, I believe we meet all the requirements of a variance, when we asked the board to grant that variance.
Great. Quick question for you, John?
Sure.
If you can, come up here for one minute. My question is, this is the deck right here, right?
Yes, correct, yeah.
So you're squaring this off to meet here?
No, we're just actually right.
If you can point that to the zoning board members, my question, that would be great, on the picture, probably.
Yeah, the picture.
Lot in picture.
Picture would be better, because I'm a little confused.
Yeah, so, right, right where you are here is, is this, what you're seeing there is this corner of the house.
Okay.
So they're squaring it off to the next jog.
Okay.
Which is, if, I would shout about a picture, but if you see this corner that you just pointed to, if you come down, there's an inside corner right here, then another outside corner. So they're squaring it off to this corner, the deck is right here.
Okay.
They would square it off right to there.
Okay.
It's approximately a four-point-three by twelve-point-four foot addition, it's very small.
Great, okay. Thank you.
About sixty square feet.
All right, Mark, I'll start on, on your end of the table.
I actually looked at this last time, said the application, I don't have a problem with the law.
Okay. John?
Uh, this owner occupied, correct?
Correct.
Um, I was by there today and, and it's probably the, the best-kept-up property in that area, so, uh, I'm sure he'll continue with that, so I, I don't have a problem.
I'm all set, I'm, I think it's, it's fine with me.
Okay, I'm all set myself.
Just, uh, just one question.
Sure.
In the addition, it shows a, uh, set of stairs, steps coming down.
Correct.
Those remain?
Uh, those, so there is a set of stairs coming from the deck. I don't know exactly how the stairs would be, they're gonna remain, they're gonna remain, yeah. So the variance, we'd be asking for, um, relief for the, for not only the addition, but associated stairs too.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
No other questions?
Okay, Brian? Kelly?
And the sole purpose of this is to enclose, have an enclosure when you come into your house.
Correct.
All right, it's not living quarters, it's not, it's just-
Storage and essentially a mudroom.
Okay. Anybody in the audience wanna be heard on this? If not, do you have your last word before we close the hearing?
Uh, thank you for your time.
All right, great. Okay, uh, what would be the pleasure of the board? Uh, I'll start worth, I'll start first with, uh, a, a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations, you know the twenty-day appeal period, you have to wait before you can do anything. Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night, thank you. Okay. That was quick. Uh, we go on to the next one. And that's on the application of Precision Motorsports, one sixty Beaver Street, Milford. Special permit sections two-point-two to two-point-three of the zoning bylaw. In relation to an eight-thousand-square-foot parcel located on the easterly side of Beaver Street, known and numbered as one sixty Beaver, which parcel is currently owned by SNS Gallagher LLC. Special permit relief is in sought for the automotive repairs upon the subject premises. With that, welcome aboard. On this particular hearing, it will be the four main members. And Mark, you'll be on this one as well. Okay? Mark, okay? All right, uh, let me read the, uh, let me read the applicant's information real quickly. We have, um, point of reasons that the special permit was sought in harmony with the general purpose intended of the bylaw. The applicant states the building is in the highway industrial zone B, the IB section. Current business manufactures body parts for custom cars. This will allow the, uh, the painting of the cars once the parts are installed. Uh, concerning the proposed use of the premise will not create undue traffic or impaired pedestrian safety. The applicant states there's no additional traffic expected beyond what the business currently generates. And concerning the proposed use of the premises will not create harm and nuisance affecting the health, welfare, and safety of the general public. The applicant says there'll be no additional runoff from the site. Noise outside, lighting proposed. The, uh, paint booth, of course, will be within the building. This was also submitted over to the planning boards for review, uh, on a May eleventh, uh, meeting schedule. On October sixth, I'm sorry. They recommended a favorable recommendation. Town planner indicated that the, uh, Precision Motorsports manufactures body parts for custom cars. The paint, the paint booth conversion will be accomplished by internal alter, alterations only. There are no additions being proposed to the building, and all applicable zoning regulations appear to be met. And he also, uh, requested a follow-up, uh, a favorable recommendation over to the zoning board. So with that, John, are you doing this one as well?
Sure.
Okay, welcome and, um, give us an idea of what we're doing.
Good evening, John Nannett with Garry and Howman, here tonight representing Tom Co, Kelly, the owner of Precision Motorsports. And also Stephen Gallagher, the owner of the building, sitting next to him in the audience. Um, the current business is located at one sixty Beaver Street. Mr. Gallagher has his, um, masonry business there. And Tom currently has Precision Motorsports. It's a manufacturing company that's been in business for how many years, Tom?
About fourteen years.
About fourteen years. Tom current, uh, Steve currently has his business in this proposed office area, and Tom currently rents, leases the rest of the building here. As you can see on Beaver Street, the property is very well-screened. As you come down Beaver Street, this is coming from Bellingham to the north. Uh, you can see the line of screening right along the front of the property. As you come in, you can see the main entrance, the site's, you know, a very well-kept site. You come in directly in front, you can't even see the building. There's white pines that block the entire building. As you come by, the second exit is gated, and this is looking into the site from the second exit. We feel that, um, you know, it's a, it's just a kind of a natural progression for the business. He does these parts, he wants to install them on the cars and paint the whole car. There's no change to parking, pavement. It's totally enclosed, um, in the, in this middle bay, the booth will be located in there. When I spoke to Larry Duncan about it, um, he said because now they're bringing, you know, they're gonna paint a whole car, it would be wise to get the special permit for auto, automotive repair.
Right.
It's not much different than what he does now, other than he's gonna be able to do custom paint jobs. It's not like, uh, a regular body shop, it's custom paint.
Registered cars on the site?
No. They, were they unregistered cars in the site? Well, they are race cars, but they would be in the building.
Okay, they're race cars?
They're race cars.
Okay.
Are the hours of operation or days that you'll be doing this, is that changing at all, or?
No, no.
Okay. Six days a week, seven days a week, what is yours?
Um, we try to maintain it five days a week, but sometimes we get overwhelmed with stuff that has to go out, so we're, we're there on a Saturday. Half a day Saturday anyways.
As Dave stated, it is located in the, um, highway business district too.
And, and they're gonna need to, they're gonna need to get the proper permits for ventilation and all that stuff through the fire department and all that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, I'll turn it over to the board members. Charlie, I'll go, I'll start with you.
Yeah, I just got a, just a quick couple of questions. So what I see here is they're all saying proposed. What is the one that's-
It was a mistake.
Okay.
It was a typo on the plan.
All right, so sure, what is actually being added? The one in between?
Uh, it, it's all there, just where that automotive painting is going, where the pink is, is kinda where the, that's the area the spa, the, the spray booth is going in that middle section of the building.
Right.
Those all should say existing.
So everything is all existing?
Everything's all existing, nothing is, uh-
All right, so you're looking for a, yeah, okay, I got you, all right.
So we're just looking for the special permit for the use.
Use.
Yes. But every, nothing is changing, um, that's a typo. And I, I did notice that today when I was-
It's too late.
I know.
You may have to deny it because of the typo.
I built the building for myself fifteen years ago.
That's the, yeah, I've seen, I've been, yeah.
Yeah, and Tom was the first one to move in on the left, who I had a coffee guy there with me for a few years.
Right.
He sold his business, he retired. So Tom, now his son works with him, and he's progressed into more. He used to sub out his painting, now that his son's with him, he wants to keep it more in-house. You know, so he gets busy when it's race season and the guys are crashing cars, that's when the Saturdays come in.
Yeah, I see some nice vehicles.
Yeah.
Is this like counting cars on TV?
Some type.
Except we don't have, we don't have the publicity of the TV guys, you know, put it on TV.
All right, Brian?
On TV now.
Yeah.
The, the work is all done indoors, it's not, you know, you don't have to work outside. Are the, are the garages in the back of the building, is that, okay? That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thanks.
Joe?
Uh, approximately, what size is the paint booth?
Um, fourteen by twenty-four.
Good size, good size, yeah.
You gotta fit the car in there, right?
Right. It's, it's all steel structure.
Okay. Any chemicals gonna be on site?
There'll, there'll be minimum chemicals.
Okay.
We have, uh, flammable cabinets.
Okay.
And, you know, we have a, what we dispose of i- is picked up from a hazardous waste company too.
Okay.
Mostly thinner, they recycle it.
Anything else, Joe?
Not for me.
Okay, Mary?
No, I'm fine with that. I'd love to see some pictures of probably some of those cars, but, you know.
I have some on my phone. Porsches.
No, I'm excited.
Okay. John?
Nah, no question.
Mark?
I was by there today. If you didn't know where I was, you would never know that.
The, the only question I had, and I asked you about the chemicals, is there more than one type of chemical that would be stored on-site?
Just, uh, lacithin, that's really a-
Okay, and that, is that-
And brake cleaner and stuff.
Now, is that stored in drums, or outside, inside?
It's inside, in, in a flammable cabinet.
All right. So we'll have to make sure that the fire chief approves all of that anyway, so.
I think it's currently on the site, most of that stuff you use anyway in the manufacturing of what you do now, right? So it's currently on-site anyway.
Okay. All right, um, I'm all set with that. You have the last word before we close the hearing, you take a vote?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, great. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Do you have a question? Sorry.
Yeah.
I applaud them over there, I mean, uh, I know what they say, the thing is hidden in the news, you know. I, I think just the primary concern was, uh, you know, the ventilation there. How much, are they gonna do it on a yearly basis, or?
Well, he, they've gotta meet the, they've gotta meet the fire code issues with the fire department, and that's a licensing issue that they need to, to deal with from the venting aspect. Um, I, I don't have any knowledge of, of that type of operation, but they do need to conform to code on it.
I, and the, most of the questions were, that was one of them, maybe, since we're just living next to them, I'm an employee, and, uh-
You're on what side, sir?
I'm on the same side as them.
How far?
Um, probably a couple hundred feet.
Okay. Before the site?
Before the site, yeah. He's in the one big forty feet right there.
Oh, okay, I, oh, I, now I got you, okay. That's Dominic Alfonzo's project, okay. Yeah, all right.
And, uh, the, the other one was, was answered, is the hours of operation there, you know? And one other concern was, was whether or not they were gonna store cars there, like, would have them registered or anything.
Right.
Now I'm seeing that it's more high-performance type things they're doing.
And, and that's what they're doing, they're, they're repairing-
Racing cars.
Race cars.
Uh, was the, was the, there were paint booths been there that they used before, or? I mean, 'cause I know they're saying that they put one-
No, they were manufacturing the body parts and stuff, but they were sending them out to be painted, so now they wanna do it themselves.
Yeah, because, I mean, when we were sent the letter, it said auto repair shop.
Yeah, that's the-
It didn't say anything about, you know-
Right. And, and it's an allowed use within the, within the-
It's a mo, we call it a motorsport shop.
Right.
Because we do fabricating and roll cages and, um, and all the race cars are stored inside because they're-
Too valuable to be left outside, right?
Right.
And we lock the gates too, there's a gate at each entrance-
It's gated.
So that people can't turn around and hang out and make these stuffs.
You have the proper lighting that you need on the building, I'm sure?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Are you adding an additional lighting, or you're all set?
No.
All right, so the, um, is there the system in the building alarmed?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from, uh, okay. Uh, with that, we'll close the hearing. Uh, board members, if you'd like to, um, hearing, hearing no opposition, I'll, um, I'll take a, a motion for approval. All those in favor, sign it by, by saying aye, there's a yes?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, you know that, you know the rule, right? You got twenty-day appeal period?
Yep.
Need anyone to test-drive anything, just let me know, okay?
All right.
Thanks very much for coming in. Have a great night, thank you. Well, we picked up some time there.
That's one too. Pretty busy guys.
Okay, we have, uh, on the application for three thirty-three West Street. Okay, uh, this is on the application of G and H. Revariance setback from the articles two-point-four and two-point-five of the zoning bylaw, relational parcel land located on the easterly side of Mystic Lane. Known and numbered as one. The parcel is owned by Jennifer M. Day. The variance is relieved is sought in order to permit the construction and use of an addition upon an existing concrete pad on the southerly side of the dwelling. Currently on the premises, notwithstanding the zoning bylaw. It's a forty-five thousand-square-foot parcel, more or less, and it is located, um, no, that's not a forty-five thousand-square-foot. Is it?
Yeah, uh, no, 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 it's, uh, point-two-one acres.
Okay.
It says booking page, why did they fill out the application for it?
No, that's fine, I just read it wrong. Okay, on this panel, uh, we will be, um, that'll be the four main members. And I'm trying to do this in rotation, so Brian, you are on this one now. Any conflicts with any board members? All right, I'll just briefly review the, uh, the application. It says what section of the zoning bylaw they're asking for out of clue, section two-point-five. What circumstances exist to the relation to the soil conditions, shape and topography of the subject premises, which do not generally affect other land in the district? Uh, the applicant states the concrete foundation and retaining wall already exists and will not change. The other issue concerning the variance were not granted, what hardship would it cause? And the applicant states the proposed addition would nega, negatively impact the existing topography of the neighborhood, if not located on the existing foundation. And then on, uh, statement number fifteen, state why you feel the grant of the variance will not cause substantial detriment to the public good. The applicant states that the concrete foundation and retaining wall already exists on the site and it will not change. This was, uh, sent over to and applied and presented in front of the planning board, and they reviewed the application at their scheduled meeting on October sixth, and they recommended the following. Unfavorable, the, uh, it could be put on the other side of the property. Larry Duncan Town Letter, uh, the proposal is to construct the addition of an existing foundation with consist of a retaining wall located point-zero-five feet from the side property line. The wall, uh, from the ground level on the adjacent property is approximately eight feet height, in height, at its highest point. The proposed addition will create an additional vertical extension virtually on the property line. There's no adequate area on the property to build a much larger addition on the north side of the property. The existence of a retaining wall does not constitute a hardship. Therefore, he recommended an unfavorable report be sent off to the zoning board. In your packet, board members, you'll also find some pictures, which I'm assuming, the first picture is the wall. And then there's a closer picture of the wall, okay. So with that, um, let's turn it over to the applicant. Is the owner here?
Oh, he actually, um, I'm representing them, I got a letter from them, they had a hardship and they're actually down in Florida, so-
You want me to put this in the minutes?
Yes, please.
Okay, this came from, this came from, um, this is John and Jennifer Day. Uh, we've been into a variance application process with the town of Milford and have been scheduled to have our board meeting October eighth. Unfortunately, due to a family situation in the state of Florida, we will have to travel out of state during this time. Our contractor Kevin Tomaso is also a family member, will be attending this meeting, and is our full power of attorney to make decisions necessary on the behalf of us for not being present. They can be reached by a telephone number and is one enclosed. Thanks again for the consideration of our home improvement project, of this garage addition will be added in necessity to protect the family and property adverse weather conditions. So with that, uh, let's turn it over to you, John, and kind of give us an idea of what we're, what we're doing here.
Good evening, John Nannett, Garry and Howman, tonight representing Brian and Jennifer Day. And I'm here tonight with, uh, Kevin Tomaso, who, if this gets approved, would be the builder. Um, I'd like to present the, to the board before I get started, another letter. This is a letter from the director of water, um, where the wall is, um, to the right, stating that, um, he understands, uh, the extent of the height, and he understands the retaining wall, and he does not have a problem with it.
I'm, I'm gonna read this into the, into the minutes so that, you know, we have this on file. Uh, this is from, uh, Antonio J. Sores and Maria Asores, our immediate neighbors to the property at one Mystic Lane, of which, uh, they say. We understand the full scope of work to be proposed at one Mystic Lane for the garage addition to the easterly side of the property, and have no objections to be, this project being constructed and maintained by the property owners. This project will have no impact to our property in any way, and we would have no obligation, no objections to, to the project moving ahead. Our understanding is that the letters were sent out to all abiding properties, even though not directly impacted, and there will be more, be a hearing on October eighth. If any abiding property owners have any objections to this project moving forward, I encourage to attend and voice their opinions on the project. With that, it's so, uh, placed in the file. All right.
Okay, so the, the current, um, lot is a, a conforming lot in the RA zone on Mystic Lane. Mystic Lane is if you're going down, um, Water Street to the right, just past Jeans and that area over there. It's basically the second house off of, I believe, Water Street. The current house, um, sits on a lot way over to the right. You can see the house was positioned on the original lot right up- on the original lot, right up against the lot line. Currently, right now, there is an existing retaining wall, eight inch, concrete retaining wall, that has a full frost wall underneath it, that extends basically from the edge of the house out, and there's a existing concrete slab that is directly opposite a door, right here on this side of the house. That slab is currently level with the first floor elevation of the house. The homeowners are asking to put an addition on that slab and that wall, and extend the house in this way, and the reason being is, of course, one of the reasons, main reason is financially, it saves them about seven to eight thousand dollars to do a foundation on the other side of the house, and, you know, seven or eight thousand dollars when you're trying, putting on a small addition is a big chunk of the total cost of the addition. You have a letter from the abadas stating that they don't have a problem with it, this wall is already existing, and Larry Duncan is right, it's a high wall, it's about eight feet high, there's pictures of it here, and here, but as you can see, the only abada that that addition faces from this one is the direct abada to the right, and that's the abada that doesn't have a problem with the addition going in. No, we don't feel, because, also because it's already concrete, there won't be any additional runoff from the site, it's all impervious now, we're not adding any impervious to the lot, we don't feel it would be a detriment to the neighborhood, this is another neighborhood on, on Water Street, that a lot of the structures are close to sidelines and, and front yard setbacks, there's a lot of older homes, this one is not one of the older homes, and it does meet setbacks, but there are a lot of houses in the neighborhood that don't meet the setbacks in that area. Basically, we're asking the board to grant the variance because of, you know, the financial hardship of the foundation, it won't, it won't cause any detriment to the neighborhood because the direct abada doesn't have a problem with it, and it won't increase any runoff of the site or anything like that. I know it's a stretch of the zoning bylaws to put something a half a foot off the lot line, it's just the financial decision to try to do it, so they don't have to put another foundation in on the other side. Once you see, I mean, they would have to dig this up, they'd disturb the ground, they would be adding impervious onto this side, because they'd be taking lawn away and doing the addition, by putting it on the other side, none of that happens, it's already on a concrete slab.
So they presently have two driveways?
They do.
Okay, and, and there aren't any dimensions here of, what is this?
It ends up, it's probably just under twelve feet by just under eighteen, it's tight for a car, but they do park their car up on that slab now. The one thing I wanna add, there is storage underneath that slab, there is a door from the backyard, it's just a regular entry door, but there's storage underneath, and they currently pay taxes on that structure, just the concrete as storage.
So, as you see, this, this is the, it is a, it's a garage addition, it's not, you know, extension of the, of the house or anything, it's a one-car garage addition that would be over the current existing...
Eighteen feet deep?
Eighteen, yeah, so it's just enough for a car.
We'll put a Volkswagen in there.
Yeah, it's a small car.
Wow.
Those plans, are those the plan, that's the plan that's gonna be...
Correct, that's the, that's basically the front, what the front would look like with the garage door, and this is what it would look like from the side with the retaining wall coming up, and the addition would come to here on the house, out to the windows there.
You got an elevation slope getting into that garage?
Correct, yeah, so there's a, as you can see from the side, yeah, this is the slope coming up, getting into the garage.
On the picture to the right, John, can you show me where the garage is stopping?
So it would stop just past the door, so that they would be able to enter the garage from the door, right here at this window here, so basically, right at the break between the concrete slab and the asphalt driveway.
Still gonna be a slope getting into that garage.
So right here, so basically, the concrete slab comes to there, that's right where that window is.
Okay.
So they'd be leaving the slab and building the, basically, a roof and walls around that.
And the pitch, the pitch of the roof is gonna be almost identical to the house?
Correct, it's right there, yep, match front and back.
Okay. Alright, with that, Mark, I'll start on your side.
I don't have any problem with it, I mean, putting it on the other side, I think is kinda foolish, but this is already ready to go, I'm just trying to figure out how a low-riding car's gonna be able to go up that pitch to get in the garage.
Yeah, then I, once you get in, yeah...
I've seen, I've seen that before, where all of a sudden, we had to put boards now to get the car up and in.
No, like I said, they park up there now, I mean, they're using it as the driveway, I mean, they, they park there now.
Yeah, so they park on the concrete now, so...
Yeah, but they're gonna have a roof on this one.
You had a contractor, so they'll call you to pull it back over.
Oops, it doesn't fit.
So much the contractor, the family member.
What's the height, what's the height of the garage? You know?
I don't know offhand, I'm siding the house, as you can see, the front's kinda tore off right now, but it's all sided, but obviously, I wanna get a full height door, but it should be in line with the measurements.
Roofline?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
John?
No, no problem.
Not, not right now.
Joe?
Just a couple of questions. What I see in the back, at least looks in the back, is that, what's concrete, is that a wall?
Yes, yes, the concrete wall extends up a couple, probably two to three feet, I, it's about two feet, up on the back of the wall, which is a good thing, so they won't be driving through the wall and coming down the eight foot and signing on the...
That's the backside.
Yeah, it's, it's...
That'll become the foundation for...
It's about twenty-eight inches.
Correct, that'll become part of the foundation for the garage.
The backside, yeah, yeah. Do you know how long the, was, when this, when the wall and the pad were put in?
I'm not sure, they've owned the house a few years now, so I'm not sure, but it's been there, and like I said, they, they actually have the records and they're like, paying taxes on it, so it's, must've been there for a while.
Seems like it was planned at one point.
Yeah.
Maybe he would know more, so...
I, I don't, I don't know, it was there when they moved in, correct?
Not exactly when it was there, but I'm saying, do you know if it's reinforced?
I do know that there's a full footing for it, I don't know that, and I'm sure that Mr. Erickson is gonna wanna know that when he goes to pull his building permit, if the variance is granted.
If they're driving on top of it now?
Yeah.
I, I know for a fact that, John, if there's an existing foundation, that he makes you have a structural engineer stamp a plan saying that it's structural, that it's inspected.
Uh-huh. You wouldn't pass it if it wasn't.
Wasn't, yeah.
So what size is this addition, this garage?
It's...
Because it's not on the plan.
Yeah.
He said it's twelve by eighteen, is what he told me, so it's twelve across and it's eighteen deep.
It's just under twelve, and it's just under eighteen.
That's why I said you fit a Volkswagen in there.
It's very small, but they do, like I said, they do get the car up in there.
Smart car for two, that's about it.
Yeah, it's about, I got eleven by, to the wall, outside of the wall, eleven by eighteen.
Should've put it on the plan, John.
I, we should've.
Another typo.
No, I didn't do this one, so it's not my typo.
Ryan?
What's, just the layout of the house, the, the area where we're looking to put the garage, what's on the other side of that door?
On the other side, no, that's actually a bedroom, but they're actually talking about changing that, they, that house actually has almost a full in-law downstairs, too, it's not considered, but they use top and bottom floors, so that could change, depending on if this gets approved. It'll probably end up being a hallway, probably going into that.
Right now, that door goes into a bedroom?
Yes.
And then, on the other side of the house, where we have the second driveway, what's that side of the house, is that the living room area?
There's a, the set of stairs going to the basement is right along that outside wall, and then there's a, a living room.
Okay, why does it have two driveways, do you know?
That I don't know.
Was there ever a garage at the end of either of those driveways?
Not that I know of, but that's, not that I know of either, I didn't see any, looking
through Google Earth pitches, you can go back historically, I didn't see any, ever any addition on that side.
Looks like it was, it was built to eventually...
Yeah, so maybe when they originally built, put the house in, whoever built it originally, pushed it to this side thinking about doing a garage on that side.
Okay. I'm struggling with this one, because you can get a larger garage within the setbacks, and within, it seems to me, a better flow of the design of the house on the other side of the house, and the driveway already leads right up to it.
Yeah, I kinda like that.
I understand the existing wall and pad.
What are you talking about, an eight thousand dollar foundation cost, that's all.
Yes, you know, of course, this, for them to do this, this is all driven financially, is why they would do the small garage on the existing slab, is of course, driven financially, where they couldn't do a twenty-four by twenty-four garage on the other side, 'cause they can't afford it, so that's all driven financially, absolutely.
They have two small kids, they just, this is their first house, but they kinda wanted to get one of their cars out of the weather, and, I mean, the, the door's there, and that's, that's why they were looking that way, otherwise, they, they just couldn't afford doing it the other side, 'cause even with the other side, if you guys know Mystic Lane, it does pitch down, going towards the Portuguese Club, I think even eight thousand dollars for the foundation on the, that might even be on the low, I think, with the, they might actually need some retaining wall on the other side to make, make that happen, and the driveway would probably have to be redone because of the elevation.
John?
Yeah, I mean, if I was the neighbor, I would prefer the garage to what's there now, I mean, because if I see it, even though it's very close, obviously, that, that's a tough situation, but, and there'd be a lot of consideration in my mind if the neighbor was here saying, no way, I, I don't see this, but they're not here, and they, obviously, they wrote a letter in favor of it. The only thing I have a problem with, if you put the garage on the other side, then, then you're actually blocking off the backyard to some extent, I mean, they only have so much free space here, it looks like originally, like Dave said, that they originally had planned to put a garage there when they first built the house, so, given it's a tough zoning issue, but it seems to be, in my mind, a, a solution that really would, would help the owner and it, it doesn't bother the neighbor, so that's my feeling.
Yeah, I mean, if they put a, built a garage on the other side, you're still gonna have this retaining wall, in other words, that's, that's there now, you're still gonna have that retaining wall, you're still gonna have the other wall, it'll still be there.
Yeah, and, and I can, you know, taking a look at that and seeing the black railings, I mean, two little kids could go off that eight-foot wall in a heartbeat, having the structure on there, probably would've looked aesthetically even better.
Probably minimize the fall, right?
Yeah, I guess it'll be seven and a half feet.
I'm just saying, if I was in a butter, if I was in a butter...
Wouldn't drop as far.
If I was in a butter, would I like to look at that, or would I like to look at a, a nice-looking garage?
Yeah.
And versus that wall like that, so, you know, aesthetically, I think it would even be nicer if the...
And it looks like they're, I mean, they're, they're fixing up the outside, they wanna put this on, I mean, I can see that, yeah.
I understand that, you know, we can, we can argue the hardship all day long, in certain circumstances, yes and no, so, okay, I'm a little bit clear on that.
Me too.
So, other than that, anybody in the audience, if not, you've got the last word, go for it.
Um, once again, you know, this is basically based on a financial hardship for a young couple, first house, two young kids, of course, I, I know it, you know it, if they could afford a twenty by twenty-four garage on the other side of the foundation, that would be the way to go, they can't do that, they currently park their car on that garage slab, this is enclosing an area that they're already putting a car, getting one out of the, out of the snow. I ask the board for a favorable vote on the variance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, not hearing a lot of negative impacts, I'll go with all those in favor of granting the variance, twelve-foot wide by eighteen-foot long garage on top of this pad, concrete pad, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We have four in favor and one opposed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Are you done now, or is there another one?
Done.
Alright, go home and watch the Bruins.
Three in a row.
There wasn't left, John, you must've stuck around.
Hey. No, no.
Thank you for the nice visuals, it really, no, it was very, very helpful to see the pictures like that, it's kinda nice.
At the time, they didn't know luckily.
Oh, sorry.
Spell check, you got spell check on one of those computers?
Yeah.
Okay, I just needed to sign that plan, give me a minute here. Alright, we'll do the, the rotation, so I believe Charlie, you'll be on this one. And this is on the application of Joseph Cunningham, of Two Joe's Way, Milford, special permit to establish a supplemental apartment within an addition to be added to the existing single-family house on a forty-five thousand square foot more or less lot, parcel of land located on the Westley side of Central Street, known as Joe's Way, and numbered as two, the special permit release is pursuant to section two point three of the zoning by law. With that, in your package, you do have, looks like a set of architectural renderings, and it's nice to have the short version of what they're trying to do, we only have one page, though, so, unless it's missing. Yeah, it's missing, I only have one page.
Yeah, you read the back, read mine.
Read the back, okay, give me a minute, be patient, I don't know why, it just didn't get in, oh, there it is, I got it, sorry. Okay, this is based, this is, explain the reason that the premises will not create any purpose of the intended zoning by law to be in harmony with the general purpose, the applicant states, the addition for the necessary apartment is two additional rooms consisting of a bedroom, kitchen, living room area, and a full bath, it will be occupied by maternal grandmother, the addition does not alter the appearance of the single-family residence, concerning the question of the proposed use of the premises will not create undue traffic congestion or impair safety, pedestrian safety, the addition of one additional person in the residential neighborhood will not create any undue traffic or generate traffic that exceeds volumes expected in a residential neighborhood, and the last question concerning the proposed use of the premises will not cause, excuse me, cause harm to the neighborhood or create nuisance or hazard affecting the health, well, safety and welfare of the general public, the applicant states the proposed use of the premises in harmony with the neighborhood, and the addition of the in-law apartment, one additional resident in the neighborhood will not create nuisance for the affecting of the general public. This was brought in front of the planning board on October sixth, they recommend favorable with the deed being recorded, it was to registry, the deed, the special permit goes with the applicant only, which will be, if that decision is made, that will be as part of the decision. Also, from Larry Duncan, the proposal was to construct an eighteen by thirty-two addition to the house for three-room supplemental apartment, all applicable zoning requirements appear to be met, therefore, they also recommended a favorable recommendation be sent off to this board. With that, why don't I turn it over to our wonderful attorney that's handling this tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, my name is Suzette Ferrera, I represent Joseph and Corinne Cunningham at Two Joe's Way, Milford, they are proposing adding an in-law supplemental apartment, which is substantially small, it's only an eighteen by thirty-two addition, one floor, that would consist of one bedroom, and there is a typo on my plan, too, it says...
I saw it.
But it's really a bedroom, and then an open kitchen, living room area, and a full bathroom. This addition would be connected to the existing dwelling through a door through the formal living room now, and then it would also have an additional entrance on the side of the house to get into the open kitchen, living area. This proposal is in accordance to zoning, it meets all zoning, it, it fits on the lot, there's also enough room to increase the septic in, because of the one additional bedroom now. The reason that they're looking to add the supplemental apartment is, my clients have four young children, under eight, they have eight, six, four, and two, in addition to that, it's Corinne's parents, and actually, it's, it's, it's two people, so two additional people would be living in the apartment, they've recently sold their house in Framingham, they're looking to move closer to their children and their grandchildren, unfortunately, the mother-in-law is not in the best of health either, so this is one of... of those things that eventually she's going to get a lot sicker and this is going to be best for both families so that for now, the maternal grandparents are there to help take care of the children, but eventually, you know, Joe and Corinne are going to have to help take care of them. So this is the best case scenario, I believe this is what the bylaw was set up for, was to set up a supplemental apartment that would be a family member to live in this apartment, that it wouldn't be more than two rooms and attached to the existing dwelling. Therefore, we're going to ask that you approve the special permit tonight.
Okay. With that, Mark, I'll start on your end tonight.
For by date today, there's plenty of room, that's for sure. I don't have a problem with it at all. No other questions.
John?
Nope, no question.
What's the size of the deck?
Um, let's see, it shows it's very small. I think it's only five by.
Four.
Five by four. And that's just so there's stairs with a landing in order to get into the house.
Okay, so the access, so the main access will be through the, through the existing house, but if they want, they'll be, you'll have like, what, like a walkway or something set up so that if they want to, if they're out and they want to come in that way and not disturb the family, they can do that?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, so, your typo. It's not a dining room, it's the bedroom?
Correct, it's the bedroom.
Okay, the kitchen setup, so you, so you need to now, what, go down the road and do some testing to expand the septic system?
I, I believe they've actually already talked so that there is enough room to do that, yes.
Okay, so the septic system will be increased by?
An additional one bedroom.
An additional one bedroom, okay. Basically, the design that's, is, looks like it's keeping in harmony with the entire neighborhood. At some point in time, whatever happens in the future, it will look like this will end up to be a family room if necessary, but a bathroom will be there. So this is going to be recorded, that it, it shows with the applicant, whenever you decide to do anything and sell this, it only goes to the applicant, so you're going to need to address it at that point in time, as, as you know. I'm okay. Joe?
Existing house is what, a three-bedroom?
It's a four-bedroom.
Four-bedroom.
We've got four kids, you need five bedrooms.
Right.
Six. It's going to the in-law apartment.
They're probably all four of them that want to go there.
Exactly. We've got four next door, so.
It's crazy.
Twelve, eight and twin drills.
I'm sorry?
We've got four next door, twelve, eight and twin drills will six. You move in and you can come and move, will you?
That's when the parents move to the in-law apartment, right?
No questions. I think, I think it was good, it's, bylaw requires that it runs with the applicant, also there's a three-year term as well, so they have to come back every three years for a renewal.
That's correct. So try not to lose, lose track of that, especially the three-year period. And the reason I'm saying that, I just ran into someone that didn't remember and he asked to now come back and get it renewed because he didn't really finish it all because the family member got sick, so now it's expired, he's got to come back in again, so, thanks for bringing that up, Brian, it's important, it's important.
So in three years, we would just come back?
You have to renew it.
Yeah.
You have to renew it. Simple procedure.
Sure.
Charlie?
Nope.
All good? Close the hearing after you make your final statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We just asked that the board approve the special permit for the supplemental apartment. Thank you.
All right, great, we'll close the hearing and the members on this, Mark, you are the voting member on that, so hearing no opposition in general with the board. I'll take a, I'll take a voice with hands. All those in favor, just remember that this is, goes to the applicant only and it also needs to be renewed every three years. With that, raise hands, those in favor. All opposed. That's unanimous. Great, have a great night.
Yeah, congratulations.
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 Good luck. With that, I believe our next meeting for the public is going to be held on?
November 12th.
November 12th, which is a Thursday as well. With that, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thanks for joining us tonight, everybody have a great day.